Good evening, everyone. Call this meeting to order and we'll start the salute to the Senate.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the living justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. This is our first meeting in 2024. Happy New Year to everybody who started off this new chapter in all our lives with a new year. Hopefully be safe and a healthy new year. Today's an important day because our re-elected officials will be sworn in to serve the borough once again for another three-year term. And as Councilman Yazdi was just saying, this is his fifth time around governor for that, so he left his family home tonight, which is okay. They've been through it several times, he's just been running the rebuttal to the film, which is nice. Congratulations to both we know as Ray and Dominic, and welcome your family here tonight. This reorg meeting, it shows the dedication of every community person that is volunteering their time to serve the borough in one capacity or the other. So this is an important night for the borough to get everybody on page of where we're going in the future, and they can start their committees and work toward their goals in each of their committees. So we thank all of them for volunteering their time. So without saying that, I'm gonna ask Councilman Catalano to come down. And before we invite your family, I just want to recognize our new chief Dan Greenwood and his officers that are working tonight. We also have our former councilman Bernie Ruhm, Jen Offield, and former mayor Craig Owensley here, and newly re-elected Board of Ed members, Nadia Samis here tonight. So congratulations to all of you for that, too. We also have Ruhm, joined us every year for this, is our borough's dear comrade. Okay, bring your family up. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Dominic Catalano.
Dominic Catalano.
Usally swear.
Usally swear that I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
And the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of councilman.
All the duties of the office of councilman.
According to my best ability.
According to my best ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
(applause)
There you go. Good idea. Yeah, absolutely. So I think first I'll reiterate what the mayor has just said, which is Happy New Year, right? Everyone enjoys the start of something fresh, right? Looking forward to what you can accomplish each year. You can stand right here. And then, sure, absolutely. And then, secondly, I think he wanted to point out a bunch of the extra people that are here today, and not even just our formal councilmen, but all the people who are gonna be appointed today have a better half, right? And I think more importantly, we know that for every person volunteering, there's someone at home that'll be taking care while they're out spending that time. So I wanna have a heartfelt thank you to my wife and my family, who did a lot of effort at home to make all this happen. So thank you guys very much. And to the rest of the borough, and all the people who elected me, thank you so much for your support. I truly do appreciate it, and I look forward to continuing to serve you. It's been incredibly rewarding, from two years ago and for three more years. So for three years in a row, I've gotten to stand here, and you won't have to hear me again, hopefully for at least three more, but I look forward to doing that for quite some time. So, thanks so much.[387.41][387.41](applause)
Okay. This is an honor for me, because back in 2011, when this all started, as I said, Ray and I took the adventure of becoming a councilman back in 2012 when we first got elected. And for, I think us, we never thought we'd be here for this long. But we keep moving, we keep putting our efforts towards the town, and I know how dedicated Ray is and how passionate he is about where we want to move Lumendale forward. So without further ado, I'm gonna invite Mayor Ray Yazdi up, just to get sworn in for his fifth time. Aye, station him.
Aye, Ray Yazdi.
Usally swear.
Usally swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of councilman.
All the duties of the office of councilman.
According to my best ability.
According to my best ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you.[529.87][529.87](applause)
Well, to really prepare a speech, I gave a family a night off, so I guess I'll start there. I do what I do, and this was my speech from twelve years ago. I do what I do because of my family, right? What's good for my family, it's good for Lumendale. What's good for Lumendale, it's good for my family. That's why I put my hat in the ring and got involved. Like the mayor said, twelve years ago, when we got involved, you know, we ran under the slogan "Common Sense Solutions," right? Because it was a lot of crazy going on in the town. So, and I feel like we've done that, right? And that's why this group has been successful. And it's a great group, right? It's my fifth term, but the people right behind me, it's gonna be there for the fifth term, right? Because we need all of us to still help. I'd like to thank the residents of Lumendale for, you know, trusting me and giving me the honor for the fifth time to get back up here. I will do everything I can, just like our campaign promises said. I'm gonna bring the dollars in, we're gonna spend it the right way, and we're gonna do the right thing with it, so. That's what, you know, kept me in it, right? Bringing the dollars. And taking care of some of the problems that we have, right? Our financial difficulties, so. Town where, well, it's every town, right? Expenses do nothing but go up. Unless your revenue goes up with it, taxes do nothing but go up. So that's been my main focus from day one, try to tax, keep taxes under control, so bring it in, the revenue is, right? And we're working on it. That's how we pass close. That's what we're gonna work on this year, in the next three years. And I give you the night off, just in case I have to run again. You know, they give you the, you know. Thanks for it.[663.37][663.37](applause)
Just before we go into our regular meeting, just wanna say a few things about where Lumendale was and where we're going. As people know through the town, there's been a lot of change in the borough. Well-deserved change, whether it be retirements, people being promoted. The town is, we believe, as a whole, is moving in the right direction. We've done some amazing projects in the past year or so. We redid Hamilton Street. We're in the process of redoing Orchard Street. We put brand-new tennis courts in up there, which was nice at Christmas. Me and my wife were on a walk, and there was people in there playing tableball. So I think we really established what we wanted to accomplish, at least this past year. We have several grants that came in. We have a grant for $345,000 for water projects over on Elm, Elm and Chestnut, over that area. We do have some flooding issues over there, which we're gonna address that, drainage. We have another grant that we received for, I can't remember, Catherine Street in Bailey Ave. Do drainage work over there, repaving for that. So we are constantly looking at ways to improve our borough and give our borough a really good appearance. In the past couple of years, all the parties, all the events that we've held in Strong Park, which really builds a community relation between the borough and our residents, has been really outstanding. For all the efforts from all our volunteers, again, and the help of John Gracianno, that can help with development, making all that possible. Brand-new supermarket opening up Friday, which is the Lumideo Supermarket, which we're looking forward to going down there for that grand opening at 10 o'clock on Friday morning. And I see things all over Facebook, and people go, "When's it gonna, when's it gonna open?" It's Friday at 10 o'clock, that store will be open, so we do have a local supermarket here that everybody can use. And I've stopped here several times, and the guy's doing a great job with being inside the store. There's pictures of Lumideo throughout the store, refurbished, the whole thing is new, it's fresh, it's clean, it's very nice. We wish them nothing but the best. And there's more to come. So that is where we're going, and there'll be more stuff coming out that we're working about the borough. We always partnership with the Board of Ed, and we've done some work with them recently, whether it be a shared service for salt plowing, little bit of maintenance on a couple of vehicles they have. We're trying to do some partnership with the Board of Ed to build that relationship, which I believe is really good for our borough to work together with all parts of the borough. So thank you all for coming tonight. We do have a regular reorg that we're gonna appoint our people tonight, we're all welcome to stay, and thank you for coming out and seeing us swearing, we're council people, Dominic Catalano again, and Ray Yazdi once again. So thank you all.[878.37][878.37](applause)
John?
Yes.
Can I say something before the chief and the officers leave?
Absolutely.
So I texted our chief this morning, and I thought this was kind of pretty cool, that the video that they did for the medical ID made its way down to Wilmington, North Carolina. And they did a presentation for a group of seniors, and I wanna say it was over thirty seniors showed up, and they watched your video, and then they helped them do the medical ID, and they were thrilled. And the information is now being passed on to their police department and their first aid and medic units there, which is mostly their fire department. And I just wanna say thank you, because they really, really appreciated it. And it was eye-opening, not only to the staff at the community, but very eye-opening to the residents as well. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
It was fun.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
And then we'll come back and start the rest of the meeting. We're back in session at 7:21. We'll start it with Rocco.
Mayor Damato.
Here.
Councilman Catalano.
Here.
Councilwoman Del Ripa.
Here.
Councilman Gracianno.
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson.
Here.
Councilwoman Schubert is excused. And Councilman Yasi.
Here. We also have Municipal Clerk Breanna Smith, Business Administrator Michael Sondemeyer, and Borough Attorney Ed Pasternak. This meeting is called to pursuant of provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. I like the notice that this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on December 20, 2023. Copies were provided to the local news media, posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and on file in the Office of Municipal Clerk. As per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers, the main entrance, which you enter through, and a secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exits, exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. Seeing none? Um, we don't have any non-agenda, right? Okay, we do not have any non-agenda items tonight. Can I have a motion to open up early public comment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come up. Seeing no one, a motion to close.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion for appointment of council president.
So moved.
Nominee is John Gracianno. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. We do all favor, yes? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I appreciate it. The confidence from my colleagues, I appreciate you can continue for another year, and I thank you all. Looking forward to a good year, I think 2024 is gonna be a very good year for the borough of Lumendale.
Okay, item number nine. Mayor appointments with the advice of council, consent of the council. Special service positions, resolution number 2024-1.1 through 2024-1.6. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And a roll call, please.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes. Item B. Resolution number 2024-1.7 through number 2024-1.33, municipal officers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes. Item C. Municipal boards and commissions, resolution number 2024-1.34 through number 2024-1.37. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes. Okay, item D. Municipal boards and commissions, resolution number 2024-1.38 through 2024-1.44, with council confirmation. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes. Item E. Resolution 2024-1.45, government body committees, citizen committees. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
And roll call.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item F. Resolution 2024-1.46, appointment of government body liaisons. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes. Do we want to... What's right here? Does he want to give him his... Do we want to wait till... Item number 10. Resolution 2024-1.47 through 2024-1.79, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes. Okay, number of special business. Resolution 2024-1.80 to 2024-1.93. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
That's how we list them, yeah.
Okay. Item 12, new business. Adoption of resolution number 2024-1.94, authorizing a temporary 2024 budget. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes. Item B. Adoption of resolution number 2024-1.95, authorizing minimum wage for staff, shelter staff. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes. Item C. Adoption of resolution number 2024-1.96, authorizing salary adjustment for business administrator Michael Sondemeyer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
John?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that remembering what things were like in the dark days after Mayor Dundee passed, I would've thought that nobody would've been able to fill the shoes, but Mike has done an incredible job, and I just wanted to say that. I really appreciate the job you've done, and I think you've done everything we could've asked for before.
Appreciate you.
Well, amen to that.
I will just say one thing, in working very close with Mike these past...
Three solid years.
Three solid years. I've never seen an administrator put the time in that you put in, whether it be the daily eight to 10 hours you put in, the weekend events that you attend, no matter what it is, you seem to show and make sure things are organized and ready to go, working with our committees for all the public events and whatever needs to be done.
I appreciate that as well.
I do thank you for your dedication to the borough.
Yeah, Mike, just to take one extra moment, my short time on the council coincides much with the three years in Houston. And I have to say, like, I've seen an incredible amount of difficult turnover, petal ash of retirements, a number of large shared services come in, and I think the multitude of large projects you've had to take on and manage in the short time that I've been involved has been impressive, organizational skills, well-deserved adjustments, so thank you.
Appreciate it, man.
I wanna put my two cents in, too. So I've called Mike every day of the week at some point, over the past three years. Sundays, it doesn't matter, he always answers, even though he shouldn't sometimes, but he's always happy to do it, and always willing to go above and beyond. Municipal Drug Alliance, one example, where he's basically doing a job that's a paid job for free, right? And just to keep it going, 'cause you know how important that is, and to keep that moving. So just one example of a menu I can pick from, but I won't go into for time. But thank you, Mike, for all that you do.
Thank you.
I just, now, I gotta say something, huh?
I don't gotta say anything.
Mike, you're all right. You know, like the chief, when we interviewed, you know, Mike, I remember talking to the chief and asking, and he was saying, you know, losing John Dundee was like losing a Hall of Famer, so we found ourselves a Pro Bowler, so. And I know this Pro Bowler's gonna become a Hall of Famer. He's already shown the dedication to this town, so, yeah, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, too, man. Is it back to me again? I like Mike, too.
Roll call? Yes, roll call, that would be...
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes. Okay. Item D. Adoption of resolution number 2024-1.97, authorizing the salary adjustment for Police Chief Secretary Sandy Caparata. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes. Item D, i.e., adoption of resolution number 2024-1.98, authorizing the salary adjustment for Senior Center Coordinator Pat Yanissey. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazdi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes. Item F. Adoption of resolution 2024-1.99, 2% raises for department heads and non-union employees. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
This is just against our normal schedule, a new year as opposed to retroactive at the end of the year, so it just helps our finance department.
Yeah, this is, yeah, like Mike said, in past years, we used to wait till the Yeah, this is, yeah, like Mike said, in past years, we used to wait till December to give out the raises from the year before, which totally made no sense to us. So when January first hits, everybody gets their two percent, and it's paid over, spread over to twelve months, and there's no extra checks at the end of the year. So you're getting rewarded for all the work they did to the prior year. So I think it's a appropriate thing to do. Okay, roll call, please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Yazzy?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Item G. Introduction of ordinance number one dash two thousand twenty-four, towing rates. Motion to read by title.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to amend Chapter twenty-one, Municipal Towing Section twenty-one dash seventeen, Towing Rates, Complaints, Appeals of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale. I'm sorry, that was a motion to introduce the ordinance by title.
Correct.
The adoption will be scheduled for January sixteenth at public hearing, public hearing adoption.
Item H. Introduction of ordinance number two, number two, two dash two thousand twenty-four, amend in Chapter ninety-two zoning, eight eights, three bedrooms. Do I have a motion to introduce by title?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter ninety-two zoning of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale. This will be referred to the planning board, so the second and final will be on.
Maybe the month of the fifth, right? Tuesday, the sixth.
Will be February sixth.
February.
After a planning board.
Fourth, I think, somewhere around there. Right?
Okay.
Planning boards like the twenty fourth, I think, somewhere around there. At the end of the month, yeah.
For the final hearing and adoption will be on February sixth.
Okay, pretty simple. Have a motion to open up late public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up, please come up. Seeing no one, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to report to continue, there's nothing on there.
There's nothing on there. We just want to meet here.
That's fine. I don't know if you want to just talk about Chestnut.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's exactly.
Them off the speed of that one.
Want me to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, just to bring you guys up to speed with the two recent rain events that we had, we did find a clog at the end of, I'll call it a clog, but a collapse, at the end of Chestnut Street and Van Dam.
Culvert.
The culvert, on the right side of culvert, there's a concrete lid with an A inlet next to that. An A inlet is very simple, a storm basin lid that was there. For me, the first big storm, we had a six inches, no matter what we did, we were going to get the water down there, it just, it's six inches of rain in the flats. The second event, where we didn't think we would have problems, from that point back to, I believe, Ty Street, Walnut Street, backed up. Everybody downstream from there did not have a problem, okay? Which they were really thankful, because we went behind those homes and there was no water. So what we found with this collapse is the concrete just let loose. It was built back in, we were thinking the early thirties, somewhere around there, that this was put in, and everything underneath it from the rush of water has undermined and collapsed. So it's like putting your finger over a garden hose, it just, it doesn't go, all right? It just doesn't, doesn't work. And that's why all those homes upstream to Ty Street were flooded. And we received several phone calls of what we're doing for it. So what we did is we had a contractor come down, actually first, our DPW Frank and Billy went down there, we opened everything up, we went down with a ladder in there, Frank got in there and started taking pictures of everything underneath, that's how we found the collapse. So we spoke with our engineer, Tom, and we brought in the contractor to how we're going to resolve this. So at the end of the day, hopefully Thursday and Friday of this week, contractors will come in and we're going to rip all this concrete work out that was put in there. We thought it was, it is a possibility, but we do not think it's attached to the bridge that crosses there, which has a county, I think it's Culvert one ninety-four, I think that is there. Because we had a county actually also came out to look at it and see what they can do to help us out. They own, well, we believe, they own all culverts on Van Dam from there up to Tyce. I don't think there's a culvert after that, but they're all county culverts. We're working with them to see what we can do once we get the clog resolved, because that's our responsibility, because it's outside their parameters, which is railing to railing. Once we get that, the county's going to work with us and see if we can get underneath all them culverts and flush them all out to make the water flow better. But we need to get this collapse fixed first. So stage one will be removing it, and then we have to figure out with our engineer on what we're going to do to resolve it going forward, whether we put in mafia block on both sides to work crosses Van Dam. But we're going to have to do something in the near future to resolve the water issue, particularly at that intersection. So that's where you are. So if anybody questions you, you know, you see people talking about it, we are addressing it, it just, we just can't do it quick, because we had a call for markouts, which has already been done. Otherwise, if it was a real emergency, we would have dug it out last week. But we have to be very careful we don't disturb under the culvert, because we can open up a bigger problem than what we have. So that's where we are with that. I don't know if you have anything else missing?
No. No, with that.
But we spent several days down there going through it and seeing what we can do to get that water flowing. And the only thing is you've got to bring machines in to pull the concrete out that was put there.
It'll probably be, it will be on the next agenda, the emergency.
Yeah, repair.
So we don't know if I can get alternate anything else, he's going to come and fix it out before that storm comes up.
And if the, we're talking, there's possibly a storm on Sunday, which we're talking a snow event, but if the weather changes, it gets warmer, it could be another rain event. So we want to get it fixed and at least help those people out there. We are lucky that this is not the middle of July, because we have a mosquito issue, which we really would have been a problem, right? And we also had to wait till the water receded, because if we cleaned it out, it would have been a rush of water, which would have really did damage to the people below there. So the water's down to a workable
Level.
Level, and hopefully by the end of this week, that will be resolved. All right? If you have any questions regarding that, you can call me, call Mike, or go down and take a look at it, whatever you want to do, but it's, it needs to be done. Anything else, do you have any?
No, I was talking to another grant writer company today, the possibility of hiring them not to exceed numbers type thing, and you might definitely need some help on an open space, it's called Jake's Lawn, they give us hopefully another half a million or so towards the Bowe Playground, which should pay for the whole thing in full, but the space we have in the county. So I got some numbers from them, so we do them, I have two different companies, we review them, and then I'll probably do a letter of intent, because that's got to get going, that Jake's Lawn one. And then I'll come back next meeting for a resolution to hire them for the year with a non-receives number, see if they do it for us.
Yeah, Mike and I talked about this, and we've always talked about hiring a grant writer, and we've tried, we've tried writing things ourself, we're just not professionals to do that. They have a way of doing it, and hopefully, one grant will pay for itself, will pay for itself. If we can get another half a million for Bow Pond and really do that park upright, I think it would be a great thing for our town. And then there's other avenues that they, we're looking at for them to write also, so it can only help us long-term, and hopefully, short-term.
Up to the last round of town, they use them also, right?
Yeah.
Quite a few brands.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything for the, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Okay.
One, one thing, it's an event that came up kind of quickly. The EDC and the Police Department are sponsoring a painting with police. It's at Bella's Art Parlour on January fourteenth, that's why I wanted to bring it up, it's pretty soon, from eleven to one. Limited space, though, there's a project that you do with the police officer, so you have to sign up at the Bella's Art Parlour website in order to do it. So it's mainly for children to sign up, right? But they need an adult with them as well. So there's only so many spaces. So they're going to have two, from eleven to twelve, and twelve to one. We're all invited, however, as I said, limited space, we won't be painted, but it's still been nice to be there.
It'd be nice to stop it.
Exactly. Very, another great event for the Police Department, always willing to help out our